Jackie, are you here so good?
I can, yes.
He just texted me saying he's not gonna be here tonight.
Isn't Shawa on medical too?
Yeah. Are you texting council?
And such.
You did. We're just waiting to see if board councillors will thrive or restart.
Okay. Okay.
I got a message about discussing.
Thank you. I apologize for being late. So I will call this meeting to order at 6:04. On. What is today? July 15. A Monday. And we have. First order of business is the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Hey, do we have Jackie? Yes, we do. Jackie, could you call the roll?
Councillor Coker.
She's excuse.
Okay. Councillor Bjarnson.
Here.
Councillor Tomlin.
Here.
Councillor Brewer.
Here.
Mayor Ketchum.
It's not attending time.
Councillor Kenyon.
Here.
Councillor Hallit.
Here.
All right. Do we have any public comment? I'll ask online since we have no one in the room. Okay, seeing none. Business from the city council. Discussion of the city's past hiring practices and other potential charter violation issues. Okay, do we have? 6.1. You want me to do this, James? Okay. The issue is council president Don Kenyon requested to schedule a work session for discussion of the city's past hiring practices and other potential charter violation issues, which was approved by a vote of the city council as scheduled for today, July 15, 2024. Copies of the city charter, the 2021 employee handbook and the operations manual, a supplement to the handbook, are included as exhibits. Some of councillor Kenyon's concerns below were emailed to city councillors and Mayor Ketchum replied below in red. Additional issues related to the city's past hiring practices may also be addressed during this work session if the council so chooses. So below is what I submitted, which I will read. I wrote, when Brian Ketchin was our city administrator, he posted a position for finance director without including the duties of the city recorder in the position. This is something the city council was not made aware of, which prevented us the opportunity to ask questions. And our current mayor Brian Ketchin responded. He said, I was very clear in discussion with the city council when I hired Mr. Jones as the finance director, that he did not have a capacity to perform the duties of recorder, given the state of the city finances. I stated that I could perform the duties of recorder with Ms. Sims, then Taylor, as the assistant. This would also alleviate the need to get an additional person bonded. If the council was not satisfied with this plan, they never voiced opposition, nor did they direct me to hire a recorder. Ultimately, it is the city council's responsibility to appoint a recorder, not the city administrator. Okay, so instead of going further, I'd actually like to take a minute to address that first topic. For me personally, the issue was not going as far back as when Mr. Jones was hired as the finance director. That was actually something that then city administrator Hutton did disclose to the council. The issue, I think, became when two years later, I think it was two years. When Mr. Ketchin was resigning as our city administrator, he had given a a four-month notice and the finance director at that time was Eric Kaitola, who also resigned on the same timeline. So Mayor Ketchin posted a position for a new finance director. And that's when the position was posted as finance director only and not a city recorder. So the position that was filled by Colleen Shirley. She was not hired as a recorder and Brian and Eric both left and no one on the council knew about this difference in the position and that's that's what became, in my opinion, a charter violation because we then had nobody appointed as a city recorder. So I went on to say my concern is the charter violation that occurred when no one was appointed by the council as our city recorder. And his response was, this is an example of the city council not following the charter. Again, I don't believe that's true. The city council was not aware in any way, shape or form until several months later. When I was in a meeting, I don't know if you remember this, James, I was in a meeting with you, Councillor Hallit and Colleen Shirley. And I asked what the timeline was for her getting up to speed with the recorder position. And her answer was, that's not in my job description. That's, it wasn't what she was hired to do.
Oh, surely.
Yes. So we had to then, over the next couple of months, I think there were some conversations with our city attorney. We had to figure out how to appoint a city recorder and get one recorded. At one, at one point, you were considering appointing yourself as the previous.
I think I did in the interim for like a month while I was trying to think of that.
Right. So anyway, we were we were left with no city reporter. But eventually we did appoint. This was, I think, maybe nine or 10 months later, we appointed Jackie as our city reporter. So I went on to say also the violation of not having a city recorder bonded occurred because we didn't know, we didn't have a city recorder. He doesn't believe that's violation. He wrote, I was bonded when I served as the city reporter. There is no charter violation. I said, it's entirely possible that Mr. Ketchin privately appointed another city employee as the recorder during the period of no known recorder because our assistant recorder had changed her title to recorder on the minutes during this timeframe. And his response was, I do not have the authority to appoint the city recorder even privately. This responsibility lies solely with the city council. I was unaware that the title had changed on the meeting minutes. The city council approves all minutes and never raised an issue about the title. So on that issue for me, because Mr. Ketchin was no longer our city administrator, it seemed something that was a complete moot point. There was nothing we could do about it at that point except to move on and fix it by appointing a recorder. I wrote, unfortunately, this would be the third violation of the charter. Was the assistant recorder ever bonded? And he said, the assistant recorder is not required to be bonded, only the recorder. That is true. However, again, we didn't know that we didn't have we didn't have our city administrator appointed. And my last comment was, could that be violation number four? And he said, no. So for me, the the whole point of bringing all of this up was because we had had a meeting where we were discussing, I believe it was sometime in June, where we were discussing the hiring practices having potentially been violated and/or the vacation buyouts not being done according to the personnel manual. And for me, it was frustrating to know that there's been, I mean, this issue that I brought up is not the only issue over all the years I've been involved in being on council where I believe someone has violated something in a rule. And my whole point is how are we going to handle all of the potential? Maybe not necessarily going backwards, but going forwards. How are we going to handle any violations of any rules? And that's what I wanted to talk about tonight.
Yes. Is there any way that we can appoint someone? I mean, I know it's the job of the council, but unfortunately, there's a turnover sometimes. And sometimes new people come in and they're not aware of like the state of things. Is there? Is there a way that the the CA, because I didn't notice it in there, is there a way that the CA can also be in charge of making sure that the charter is being followed by council, like have it be an extra set of eyes on the charter itself? I mean, I know James is pretty savvy with it, but if James were to leave tomorrow and a new CA were to come in, they would have to familiarize themselves with the charter. And if they didn't know that, for instance, we only had an assistant recorder and not a full-time recorder and that, you know, this were to happen again in a turnover situation. My question would be, who can we have be like the charter overlooker for council, just to to make it to where no matter what, there is one person on council that is overlooking those things? Especially if someone like you, for instance, weren't here, someone who's as savvy or Chrissy who's as savvy with the charter.
Go ahead, councillor.
Ultimately, the truth is, is that all city councillors are really the ones that are supposed to know the city charter ins and outs and that's hard because city councillors come in sometimes for two terms or two years or four years and it's a lot and but that's really the bottom line is the city councillors are the ones who are elected to, maybe say an oath, that we're going to follow the charter. Yeah, I agree. It's great that that James knows it, but I really think bottom line, it's it's us that has to know it. I think in this instance that councillor Kenyon's talking about. I think we all go on assumptions sometimes that, you know, I would not have assumed that city recorder would have been removed from a job description, so let's really think these, some of these things is just hard to know what's going to happen when.
I think that's one of the issues that Oprah just had lately is we have a whole bunch of turnover and a lot of different positions, not only council, but in the city position, like the higher-ups, you know, mayor, city administrator, chiefs, finance directors, these people that are supposed to be helping lead the city with council, you know, we have all this turnover. So having people in there that they can choose when to follow charter or use reasons of emergency when they're not or whatever the reasons are to go above and beyond what charter says. It's really hard when you are coming in twice a month to meet, to keep up on all the ins and outs, because again, we're assuming that our higher-ups are taking care of the other stuff and it's really hard to look over every detail that comes across the city's desk, like James's desk, for instance. But yeah, I mean, maybe making sure job postings are, you know, include all the titles or and responsibilities. Maybe adding them with a new finance director, you know. If we ever have to have a new city reporter, make it to where the finance director automatically gets that job.
We'll see. Secondary to well, now that Colleen's gone, yes, we could have that discussion. Do we want future finance directors? There's a position open right now, right?
It hasn't been posted.
It hasn't been posted? Okay.
Is so. We added back on the city recorder job? We want to follow our charter, shouldn't we? Yeah.
Well, there's nothing in the charter that says finance director.
No, but it does say in the charter that we have to have a city recorder. And and it talks about the recorder being bonded. And that's because the city recorder in all the years prior was the finance director.
Maybe that's what I had in my head in the past. It's been that way.
So when we were talking about the charter review in the committee that I've been on for the last couple of years, one thing I pointed out, I pointed out this exact situation is maybe the city recorder does not need to be a part of the charter. Because if the recorder is not managing the finances, why would the recorder need to be bonded?
Well, because in the current CHR, the recorder
signs all
orders of the treasury. Which means they're doing the financing, which is not how we're practicing our business right now. Nor have we been for the last couple of years. So I made the recommendation and the committee talked about it at length for a very long time. And we ended up, I thought, we ended up deciding that the city council could create an ordinance moving forward. If the recorder was not in the charter anymore, then the city council could make an ordinance that would delineate what the responsibilities of the recorder or the bonding would need to be moving forward and not have it be a part of the charter. And I thought that's what was going to end up in our
Yeah, and I didn't get a chance to look at section 3.9.
So I, I reviewed it just tonight before I came down here and I can't find it. There's no mention of recorder in the new version of the charter that's being proposed to go on the ballot in November. Which I'm confused about, so that that could be another thing that needs to get hammered out ASAP.
Well, that is saying it's 3.9.
Oh, it is? Do we have?
Section 3.9. Record of council meetings must be kept and managed by the council rules. The boss and city authority. The questioning record of each council can be heard. So she must be entered into the record. Never can logically be the work from the data. Council must also mandate by ordinance how the following responsibility are filled or perfected or handled.
Okay. That's very covered right there. So ultimately, the charter is the document that the people decide. So I guess it'll be up to the people whether or not to go with the new way or or keep the old way.
Yeah, I think maybe that's what maybe decided was to take it out.
I think that was the one meeting that you had to excuse yourself early. One of the last meetings that we had.
So I'm assuming tonight's purpose is not to talk about how to change the charter. Right? Or is it?
I mean, if the council felt that it should be something that stays in the charter, I think they should collectively put that voice toward forward to the charter review committee. But ultimately, the charter that's going to be proposed to the public is, well, this council is going to sign off on it, yea or nay, or make recommendations. So it is something that if it was felt needed to be there, it should be talked about and and moved forward, but we're on a very short timeline. I think we have to have all of this in by early August or maybe mid-August to get it on the ballot.
I think that's what I wrote down. Yes.
That's the next, the next problem.
Can you say, when you say keep it on there or add it on there, are you talking about what, do you want to see what you're talking about removing or adding?
Yes. So he has a current version of the charter right there.
Yes.
And there's a section called appointed officers or something like that.
Yeah, we do. It's in the agenda.
I just didn't see a printed copy. Oh, right here. Oh, right here. Sorry, yeah, it's right here, so. So here's chapter five.
Yeah, no, wait.
That's it.
The 2012?
Yes.
Oh, I thought you were referring to the newest version that we were going to.
I am, but I was going to give you an example. If you look at the old charter.
Yes, I was just reading the old charter on that. And I was wondering which I know you're talking about.
So under chapter five, powers and duties of officers, there's the mayor, the municipal judge, the city administrator.
Section twenty-two, next please.
Yeah.
And then recorder.
Yeah.
So that section for the new charter. This is going to be going on to the ballot. That section's been removed and replaced with what James just read to us.
That's what I thought. Okay, I want to make sure.
So in other words.
Been changed.
The recorder would not be an officer of the council. It would just be a job like. You know. A city staff position, like any other city staff position. Does anybody have thoughts on that?
It would make things easier in having cross vacation breakdown. It would be a job that the city administrator held to respond or like how the overseeing of.
Right.
He would be the first, he or she would be the person to appoint that would take it out of the council's hands on who's being recorder.
But they also need to be signed by the Treasury.
Right.
Who would do that instead?
So the positions wouldn't be coming over essentially.
We discussed that too, the new charter, new charter. New charter operates, the administrative finance director. Mayor and council president for operating time there's the for the civil treasury, AKA checked.
Right.
Seems like it would be a little bit easier if this type of situation would ever come up again.
Yeah, I don't recall. They give more than cities.
Makes more sense this way of the new charter.
Right, so I understand that we're going to be having another meeting in the future regarding the other issues with employee handbook. I mean, I'm not really prepared to discuss those tonight anyways, but my whole point is you know, how do we how do we handle it when we know something is has happened that was incorrect or is happening?
Seems like you do what I did, I just went to James and said, hey, this looks like something happened or is happening, it's incorrect. Back to me. Or bring it to the council meeting, yeah.
Do you have any different ideas as how you'd like to see those things happen? If that, if it comes up again.
No, I mean, I would like to see moving forward how. Obviously, I'd like to see it where we don't have stuff happening behind our backs that we don't know about, so we don't know that violations are occurring. I guess that's the biggest. The bigger concern that I have is that here's an example of something that could happen and and we just aren't aware in any way.
Something that did happen and we weren't aware for several months.
Right.
You have, you have a simple board chart. It's one positions and. There is one on the city website, but it's not fully entered. Especially with the job to record, because that's jumped around and assigned.
Yeah, but it seems like when the Brian CA, he was also the city reporter. But he was. If he was part of his job, but he had Jackie as the assistant. So on the board chart, it would show him as city reporter, so when he leaves, it's obvious that there's an empty spot.
Yeah, I mean, Jackie can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the way that Brian did is Brian made himself a city reporter because Brian was already bonded, this is that took care of the bonding required. Brian was technically a reporter, but then he passed the actual duties of creating the minutes. Jack as the assistant reporter, is that accurate? Jack, is that how it works?
Yes, yep.
Same as a fire chief, he had the title, but he wasn't actually the fire chief, wasn't doing the fire chief job. Just like he wasn't doing, the city recorder was just.
Yeah, but still, like.
On the org chart.
That's who's in control of that job, I guess. If they delegated somebody else to help them, they're still in charge of it. So if they're gone. Point out not to be a speaking.
Right, it would accept that. The way that the job title was before that was the finance director. I mean, it's in it's in the job description.
Prior.
Prior to when the position got posted for Colleen. The one she responded to. The word recorder did not exist in that job posting nor job description. It was strictly finance director. Which was not something that came through the council, so we just were not aware of it.
And for the new job posting, finance director, she's still working. I don't intend to. Recorder, the job description. Finance director, unless it was right, that's the other ones.
So it almost feels like some of this topic is kind of tabling on whether the charter passes or not. If the charter passes, this is a bit of a moot point. But if it doesn't pass, then we have to have a new process for how we manage the charter position.
If the, if the proposed charter doesn't pass, then we're.
Then we're okay, because Jackie has been appointed by council as recorder, she has bonded the requirements of the current charter.
It's just that she wouldn't be signing all orders of the treasury like the charter.
Right. Yeah, technically, in our current charter, it's the mayor and the city reporter is supposed to sign off.
Right.
But somehow unable to operate with allowing the city administrator and council president well, to sign it. That's not enough, I need to. Take by the city attorney or what? It seems to me that for years, city administrator and council president.
Well, council president was listed in the charter under when the mayor's absence.
Right.
But no city administrators listed.
I don't think it has, a city administrator is in the charter, but I don't think it says anywhere in the charter whether or not we can sign check.
Yeah.
It's just mayor and recorder.
There is a catch-all, the city administrator perform other duties as the council describes consistently with this charter. Always been my way to get around job descriptions. Right, my hired people.
Yeah.
And other duties as.
As assigned.
As assigned. So maybe at some point this council okay, the city administrator will be signing.
Probably around two thousand and eight to two thousand and eleven would be my guess.
That's something that we should revisit and make sure of. Do you want to take James's pen away?
Well, as has been proven many times in the last few months, the necessity to have more than two signers is otherwise bills aren't going to get paid.
Yeah, but I think it goes back to maybe wait and see if there's new charter passes. When you turn that. Says any of those four people.
Right. It just means that we are acknowledging that we are violating our charter right now and have been for.
Potentially, it depends on interpretation, because it has brought up the other duties and sign by council. Maybe in two thousand, it goes, and I'm a city administrator got authority to sign. And then the council president says, yeah, whenever the mayor is unable to perform the functions of mayor's office, the president shall have. In terms of that, is the mayor's not available, council president will sign.
Right.
But I mean, you know, everything, if something like that, I mean, the city attorney would probably say, well, probably, maybe it really would have been tested before. What, what, what is the definition of unable to perform the function, mayor? Day? What's that? I said have a sliver of your finger to sign.
I don't know, because every, every bit of what I feel is that we should always be following our charter. That meant doing the research to find out if it ever got changed. But at the same time, we're talking about being a few months away from the solution solving likely solving the whole problem. If it gets adopted, which I'm very hopeful that it will.
Is there something that we can do to give permission to the CA, for instance, through council to do things while we wait for the charter vote? I mean, is there a way that we can?
That's a really good idea. Other duties as assigned, we could assign our city administrator to be a check signer in the interim. Tell the until we know if the charter passes.
Good, but if they have already been done. If we're going to do that just saying.
No, maybe we should bring that up, put it on the agenda to talk about it. Signing both to the check writing for the check.
Signing. I think that's a good idea. James, I'm just noticing right now that this work session agenda says work session and public hearing. Is that just a typo for next meeting? Okay. So is that all right with you, James, to add something to our next agenda so that we can have a motion to consider for tech signing to keep us compliant for the rest of the?
Yeah.
Technically, if somebody wanted to challenge that, it would be.
Some motion, something to the administrative and council president shall have the authority to sign all the resources.
I would say maybe specifically sign checks. Because I know that orders of the treasury has been looked into by the city attorney in the past, and that includes like contracts with banks or, you know, insurance contracts, things like that, which I would want those to go through the proper finance director channels, if at all possible. Even though right now we're in the interim, but we have a qualified person filling that role, do we not?
Yeah.
Until someone, till the jobs posted and someone's been hired.
Yeah, I'm surprised.
What was that?
I can add that to the agenda.
Okay.
Well, at least talk with complaints and one thing that we can help right now.
Well, at least talk with complaints and one thing that we can help right now.
Has everyone here had a chance to review yet the charter, recommended new charter?
Yeah.
We'll be having that meeting on Thursday, and so any concerns, make sure. Make sure to bring them up. Did we have any other orders of business for this meeting now? So I will offer to the public. Public comment now. Online, do we have any public comment? Seeing none. We have a motion to adjourn. A meeting adjourned.
Jackie, I'm going to end the meeting on this end, and then you double check that it actually recorded.
Do we have an issue with recording? Yeah, do you want me to not stop recording then?
I'll, I'll stop with the recording right, right now, because we have the adjourn. I'm still on my end.